Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council meeting. Today's date is October 3rd, 2022. Time is 6:47 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised by the City newspaper, if it forms public opinion, otherwise not in sunshine law. Roll call?
Swan.
Here.
Davenport.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kimona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
Six and eight.
Entertaining motion to approve the previous minutes.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Not a quid.
Okay, first of the agenda is ordinance number seven, second reading, public care will be held during regular session, vacating portions of streets and certain alleys in the city.
Any questions? Say your name.
Resolution sixteen, second reading, public care will be held during regular session, amended chapter one eighty-seven, article one of the city code with title parks and playgrounds.
Any questions?
Ordinance number seventeen, second reading, public care also held during regular session, amending chapter one nineteen of the city code entitled construction codes uniform.
Any questions? Say your name.
Resolution eighteen, second reading, amending chapter three hundred, article two of the city code entitled land management, public care during regular session.
Any questions?
Ordinance number nineteen, first reading, amending chapter two thirty-five of the city code entitled sewers and sewer dispensaries.
Any questions?
Resolution one seventy-eight, awarding the contract for installation of a boxing gym in an amount of fourteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars and zero cents to Ikonelli contracting company incorporated.
Any questions?
Resolution one seventy-nine, enabling the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's green acres program.
Any questions?
Yes, can we get an explanation please?
The explanation for one seventy-nine is stated in the explanation section, the original resolution that was passed by city council some time ago was done in the format using the language of the template that the city typically uses for their resolutions, under review under NJDOP, DEP, under NJDEV. It was brought to our attention that they needed the city to use their language. So the same resolution, it does not change the amount of the loan or the time or in terms or condition of the grant, it just puts the document into the format that required format of NJDEV.
Thank you. You're welcome. Resolution one eighty, granting approval to the Southern Jersey Family Medical Board Health Day Event in the city on October the twelfth, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, held at the Pleasantville Bus Station.
Any questions?
Resolution one eighty-one, proclaiming the month of October as breast cancer awareness.
Any questions?
Next is review of the bills.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll talk about the bills that were paid between this council meeting and this council meeting, and you see down at the bottom with wire transfers. First one, five eighty-nine is for the payroll for last week. Four twenty-seven is the medical costs that we wired up to the state before the month of September. Reserved eighty-five hundred hours as we pay for postage to pet and bogs, and the last two are in there are debt service for both the current fund and sewer fund from a bond that was from 2011. And we do all these wire transfers as they will no longer accept tests. For bills that we're looking to approve at this time, next to that one on the bottom is New Jersey, says American Water. What that is, is that once a year, our tax office gets a report from New Jersey American Water of usage for everybody in town, and we have excess water charged for all commercials and resident, public commercials and industrials that go above one hundred fifty thousand gallons. She gets that information from the report generated by New Jersey American Water. Negotiation two, second one now is clear trash collection fee of one twenty-three, and then our third quarter sewer bill to ACUA of four hundred ninety-eight thousand.
All right, Mr. Louie, so you're saying that the third quarter, is that for each quarter we're paying four hundred ninety-eight?
Yes. So, so put that, a little under one point nine ninety, but we get reimbursed from Army Corps of Engineers, three hundred twenty thousand dollars for the processing of the pressure pit of water that goes through the ACUA. So our net is like one point six million. And next reading, page six, what the other bills that relate to normal processing bills. Down at the bottom, you'll see QEB especially, think these are insurance deductibles for couple claims of current and former employees that the insurance is going to be paid. I won't mention any, but they were, let's say, former employee and current employee. And on the page seven, third and bottom, Whitson Nutrition, this is our final payment for summer camp food program. It's all paid out of a grant from New Jersey Department of Agriculture. A lot of these are normal bills, but obviously if you have any questions, we'll be happy to try and answer for you.
I do, for the one that you previously, specialty insurance?
Yes.
Is that from lawsuits?
From lawsuits, people who are selling citigas.
Okay, so how much longer do we have to pay?
That, that was the deductible that we're paying for, I'm pretty sure the claim was nearly paid. These are normally when you get it from QEB, the claim is that close to being done, they're just looking for some deductible payment. So how long, the last councilman, I can't take, because don't think anything dragged out forever, but I think we're pretty, pretty close to these two.
Question.
Yes.
On the first page, the payment to the judge, is this something, is it something, is this an extra seven hundred dollars from what we usually pay him, or?
From New Jersey for the work?
The judge.
This is additional seven hundred dollars we have, when they have a special DWI court, he gets extra money because of above and beyond normal duties. We also pay, you'll see one here, I believe it's Carl, Tricia's attorney, again, he needs additional above and beyond court cases, that the money is paid out of a grant we get from the state, from DWI education services, we get money once, maybe every year, forty-five thousand dollars based on the number of dumping disorderly cases that we have in Pleasantville, and the money is really coming out of a grant fund, it's not coming out of our operations.
Thank you.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public who can speak on agenda items, and agenda items only, let's come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I had a question, reference to ordinance number sixteen, the recreation fees, what are the current fees? It says, because explanation said it's to adjust certain recreation fees with different activities.
There are align fees with different activities.
So is there a difference?
Just an adjustment that was made across the board for the month.
So there a percentage difference for non-residents of the increase?
Let me just ask a question, the backup documents, I think the fees listed. The ordinance has the fees, once again.
Sure.
Yeah. So what the ordinance has is the list of all the summer fees within the recreation department, and what the recreation committee did was sit down and review all of the fees that were outdated and adjusted, importantly, what we did notice in the old fees was that there was no differential fees for non-residents, and we made that difference in fees.
Now, does this include the events that come through our town, such as the triathlon, or?
It does not.
Is that a different category?
Yeah, well, that is, this is specifically for usage of the recreation center fees only. Yes. Which ordinance today?
Okay. And ordinance number nineteen, what is the impact for the overall resident, and how many residents will be affected by this?
Number nineteen, which is?
The minimum for the sewer, sewage and sewage dispensary?
So, when, when this ordinance was researched and looking to, specifically focusing on commercial properties, so when commercial, so it may have an impact on residential, but it's based on the way that the sewer system is designed, right? And that information according to how the backflow is, that information is what's in the document. So the purpose of the addition to ordinance is to protect the city, so that if there's a backflow of sewer into private property, the city will no longer be responsible for any of that backflow, if the requirements are met within ordinance. So what the ordinance is doing is actually advising those that this is applicable to, that you should put a check valve in, and should you not put a check valve and have an overflow of sewage in your property, then the owners will responsibility of whatever that danger impact is, is not on the property owner, because the ordinance states that you need to put a check valve in, based on the way that your system is set up.
So is there, like on the map, is there a certain region, maybe?
It's not a region, it's just based on your sewer system, and it'll explain to you based on that design whether or not you need to do that or not. And so when someone has an issue about that, they will go to the construction official, and he'll explain whether or not to do it.
So there's going to be like mass notification, so like the whole town?
It's really like.
Was the whole town about it?
It's like a basement, somebody has a basement, sewer line comes in.
Yeah.
If the line's clogged up out front.
Yeah.
It can, all the work can back up into the basement without a stop, a check valve, that stops you from coming back in the ass.
So I'm just trying to understand, like, as far as like a resident, even a commercial property, is there an inspection?
Yes, there's an inspection, so when an inspection is done, if what we're talking about is applicable for that particular property, the construction official would advise you that you need a check valve, and so it's not something that you would know, something that the construction official would advise you of.
So is that something that's going to be done, for the city overall, like, we'll know that these properties are, or not?
When you say done, I'm trying to understand what you're asking.
Like, you know, east of Route nine, maybe the water table, and it might affect the neighbors.
The ordinance is for the entire city.
Okay.
Right? So if you are buying, or if you need to see over your particular property, well, the inspectionist, I mean, he'll advise at that time whether a check valve is needed.
Okay, so there's not going to be like an updated, like, I'm just trying to.
I get what you're trying to say, but I think it'll be difficult for the city to go into every single property and tell you whether you need a check valve, so when there's a transfer in ownership, that's at that time, then you'll be advised, I think that's the best way.
So are the people currently, are the grandfather in to not be responsible?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, it seems like there'd be, do we have some liability out there that brought this into existence?
There was an issue that may just look at it, yes.
Say your own, entertaining motion to close the public portion. Favor. Not a quid. Not a quid. I'm looking for a discussion. Council, council.
I have a, I have a question.
Welcome.
Go ahead.
No, I have nothing.
I wanted to ask a question on, for Ms. Payton, and I don't know whether it's applicable for me to bring this up now, but being, I did miss the special meeting about the aid, what is it called?
Transition aid.
The transition aid process, you know, I was hoping that we could have a little discussion on that, so I can get a little bit more clarity on it, but I don't know whether right now is the right time to ask those questions, but I do have some questions on it.
Yeah, so that discussion was in closed session, so any comments or the being further discussion, I believe, would have to be taken into closed session.
Yes, that whole meeting was in closed session.
So can we go to closed session, is that possible?
Yes, you can, if that's what you want.
Yes. I would like to make the motion go to closed session.
Dan, we adjourn this meeting.
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to do it after, it's probably a matter of whether you need to do it after.
So when would you all like to do closed session? At the end of this, at the end of this meeting, or the end of the regular meeting?
At the end of this meeting.
Doesn't matter, we can wait until the end of the regular meeting, I've got a call, don't have to wait.
Okay.
Nothing at this time. Nothing at this time.
Just for good order, like, I may have mentioned Jackson, Mississippi, the hardship that was taken policing in Jackson, Mississippi, the sewer collapsed, flooded to the water, drinking water, shower water, and so on and so on, for the one hundred eighty people, including some of my relatives out there. And they live, she lives on the street, Becker Evans' wife. The NWA CP, and their, Jackson NWA CP is now filed, charged with federal government, because they're not getting, receiving the funds that they needed to help them in their hardship. So, stop us, the Jackson, Mississippi, as we move forward, and all other elected officials are making the right decisions for their community. I'm, they're being, so entertain the motion to adjourn. Favor. Favor. Not a quid. Not a quid. Good evening again, this is the City of Pleasantville, City Council meeting, today's date is October 3rd, 2022. Time is seven forty-six PM. This meeting has been duly advertised by the City newspaper, ready to perform, otherwise not in sunshine law. Please stand for implication and flag some. Police, please, this is a two flag, United States of America, the citizens of America, for which this stands, one nation, on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Swan.
Here.
Davenport.
Present.
Dammalara.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kimona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
All of it.
Entertaining motion to discuss. Motion. Favor.
Aye.
Where do you have any comments?
I'm happy to back in.
Okay.
Person of agenda is ordinance number seven, public care, the car, second reading, vacating portions of streets and certain alleys in the city.
This is second reading, anyone, anyone from the public with questions, I guess?
Good evening, I have a question, what does that entail when you mean vacating? Does it mean manpower, or does it mean physical excavation of land? What does it mean?
Well, I'll just touch it a little bit, vacating land is in certain alleys and streetways that the city has, that's usually small portion of parcels that the city has available, is typically adjacent to other properties. So what we have from time is that current or adjoining property owners may keep maintenance of this property, and they may ask if they can take ownership of it. And so this, what has transpired off of Madison Avenue, you know, joining property owners because of the city, if they can actually take this small portion of land and actually add it to their property. So it becomes part, part of their property and their responsibilities.
So vacating is a term in development, where you have to do a process of like, clearing the public utility, you've been doing something with the land, so it's not, or the land that as I was describing before, was a process to do with what Mr. King already mentioned.
So every time someone wants to do that, it has to be made in ordinance form, location?
Not necessarily, it depends on how things are described, when it's a land description, it's only, it has to do with, it's a case by case basis. So like sometimes you see with a street, if you want to like combine a section and clear a street, so it doesn't go through a neighborhood, it just really depends on the size. But you do it by ordinance to make sure it's documented as a council decision, and not just a revolution that can be used for later times.
So does that change their property value and all those other things that go in?
It could, but that's even above not being there, it's only the ten of the big ones.
It also changes the city map.
That's exactly what.
So the ordinance changes, requirements change, there's a lot of aspects to that, changes the actual city map.
As an engineer.
It no longer becomes city property, it becomes the property of the homeowner, it may increase, it does become a part of their property, so if assessment is done, that is added to their property, does not necessarily go up, go down, but it does become part of their property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public?
Okay, I need a motion to close the public.
Motion to close. Second. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Dammalara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number sixteen, second reading, public care required, amending chapter one eighty-seven, article one of the city code entitled parks and playgrounds.
Motion. No. This is not second reading, this is for the public. Anyone from the public on this agenda item, agenda item only, for this only, for his name. Anyone? Entertaining motion to close. Favor.
Motion to close. Second.
Favor. Not a quid. Not a quid.
Motion for roll call. That is motion to close the public care.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Dammalara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number seventeen, amending chapter one nineteen of the city code entitled construction codes uniform, second reading, public care required.
Second reading, anyone from the public who can speak on this item, ordinance number seventeen.
I have a question, in reference to that, how does that affect residents if they wanted to, is there a separate fee for residents, or is it all one fee?
All one fee.
So how does that impact them, is it a substantial increase in the fees, or?
Say that again.
Is it, like, for, like, say, the resident, a resident of the city wanted to improve their property, and they would be, you know, fees would that?
You're free, go and do it.
That's it, so there's no.
They're not discounting them.
Okay.
Normally, you have a hard time getting them to come in to get a permit, so that's, you know, it's mostly people that are out there doing construction, corner of houses, they're the ones that come in to get the permits.
So more of a commercial target and fees, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Favor.
Second. Motion for roll call. That is motion to close the public care.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Dammalara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number eighteen, second reading, public care required, amending chapter three hundred, article two of the city code entitled land management.
This is the second reading, anyone from the public who can speak on this agenda item, this agenda item only, for his name. Anyone? Entertaining motion to close. Favor.
Motion to close. Second.
Favor.
Motion for roll call. That is motion to close the public care.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Dammalara.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number nineteen, first reading, amending chapter two thirty-five of the city code entitled sewers and sewer dispensaries.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Anyone else on the public?
Anyone else on the public? Motion to close. Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion to adopt? Second.
Okay, roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, ordinance number seventeen, amending chapter one nineteen of the city code entitled construction code, uniform, second reading, public care required.
Second reading, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item, uh, ordinance number seventeen?
I have a question, in reference to that, how does that affect residents if they wanted to, um, is there a separate fee for residents or is it all one fee? So how does that impact them? Is it a substantial increase in the fees or? Is it like for, like say the resident, a resident of this city wanted to improve their property and they would be, you know, fees would?
Pay your fee and go and do it.
That's it, so there's no?
There's not a discount, you know?
Okay.
Normally, you have a hard time getting them to come in to get a permit, so that's, you know, it's mostly people that are out there doing construction, loan over houses.
Yes. So more of a commercial targeting fees, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the public? Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. I'm standing. Third.
Motion for roll call. That is motion to close the public care.
Motion. One, second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, ordinance number eighteen, second reading, public care required. Amending chapter three hundred, article two of the city code entitled land management.
This is the second reading, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item, this agenda only. For his name. Number one. I'm intending motion to close. Motion.
Motion to close. Sir, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for roll call.
I'm sticking.
We want roll Swan. Second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, ordinance number nineteen, first reading, amending chapter two thirty-five of the city code entitled tours and sewer disposal.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Ordinance moved to second reading scheduled for October seventeenth. Resolution one seventy-eight, avoiding the contract for the installation of a boxing ring in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and zero cents to Acornelli Contracting Company.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved, resolution one seventy-nine in Aglen, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection ring acres program.
And second motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved, resolution one eighty, granting the approval of the Southern Jersey Family Medical for Health Day event in the city on October twelfth, two fourth, sorry, two P M, five P M at the Blood Bowl Bus Station.
One motion.
Second. Who's that? Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved, resolution one eighty-one, declaring the month of October as breast cancer awareness.
Motion, second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved, any motion to approve the bill list?
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved, motion approved, any motion to approve bingo license?
Motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fambler.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Motion approved, next is public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this? Any item. Full.
Okay. I read you say three minutes?
Yes.
Three minutes, okay? Thank you, Captain, Danny Ford, last meeting, you lost me three minutes. Mr. President, I am a restless three home, three hundredth architect of the area. President, tell me good, you can't understand me with my neck, okay? Uh, Mr. President, I had a little bit of trouble. My last meeting, I was having a bad, and I committed my dear beer. Councilman Judy Ward, committee president, at the football game, with a grass ball. I did not see her, but my dear accountant, called Thomas, you're there? I found out through conversation, and same for you too. Now, to jump back, uh, at our NAACP Freedom Tour dinner, again, I was proud to see our dear beer, Judy Ward, president, and my councilwoman, Ms. Famblerio, I saw you, and, uh, and Miss Ali, Miss Ali, did I see you? She said hi to me too. So, I'm just a proud guy, love my city, I love to see my legislators on the job, and your presence, you know, like, uh, question, uh, the, uh, it would relate to nineteen, but it's a development in our community and there is action on the property of the old high school, Hampton Court, and the building works. And, uh, I'm trying to catch that with my city crutch, but I didn't, so I would like a quick update. What's happening at the old high school is filled with pipes and the whole bit, so we need to wanna be prepared to, so I can ask, I get telephone calls, and I wanna be, I know telephone calls to the crick, but I live next door, so could someone tell me what's going on?
To, to me, I really don't know, but it looks like a lay down yard for the company that's out there doing the work.
I'm sure it's like that, but it, and the green pipes, but I don't know, but it's still.
No, it's not spiteless.
No.
So we're doing work on Anson and Franklin?
Yes.
So they're using some portions of that section for staging.
Okay, very good, very good, thank you very much. And, uh, my other point was that, uh, my policemen are busy. I've seen no police cars in the last two weeks, and I seen it this year. Come in, I see my chief wheels, the guys out there doing the job, and if you check the crime rate, I think it's been pretty good, and I was just sitting and looking at that. Thank all of you for what you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Just a moment.
Good evening, everyone, for still in a while.
Good evening.
I want to commend everyone for moving forward with, um, more eco-friendly options as far as, uh, vehicles and getting a electric charging port. Do you want to say that?
Stations.
Yes, um, that seems to be a good thing for the city. As far as improvements, that, that is one that I can say I stand behind. In addition to improvements, can we do something or find grants or something to update and improve our bike path, walkway? Because ours compared to surrounding cities looks like an alleyway. And it needs to be improved. In addition to that, on Crescent Avenue, where we have a park, there is no indication that there is a park there, so when you're coming from is that Dolphin or towards that way to head to Route nine, there's no indication. And I've observed that people use it as a drag strip to come down to go towards Route nine. And that play, that playground, that park is right there, and there's no indication, slow, park here, children at play, and children live right across the street, and they walk back and forth, and there's total disregard for the speed limit, so my neighbor said that she requested or asked to see if there could be a speed bump or something done to, um, deter speeding down the street. So that's one thing, and another thing is that if we're talking about the sewer and we're passing ordinance, I would hope that this also applies to the portion of a seeking that Pleasantville services. I still didn't get a response or an answer to why the portion that Pleasantville service of a seeking only pays two hundred and sixty-five dollars for their sewer while Pleasantville residents pay five hundred. I do not think that's fair, I do not think it's right, and it's also missing that only them paying only two sixty-five is missing a good portion of revenue stream. So I believe and I think that they should be increased. If we're servicing, what's the difference between right here and there? With Pleasantville servicing this whole area for sewer, then everybody should fairly be paying the same price. Thank you.
I do reference, seeing that you brought that up, Mr. Ludy, did you say we were increasing our? So would you explain that to her, please, so that she understands?
We, we're looking for, if we do an increase out of December this year, they will be paying the same rates as a residential possible.
And when does this have to be effective?
We're looking at two percent increase, they will be, we'll bring them from two sixty-five to five ten.
The effective date has to go before this, don't remind for two readings, we're hoping to get it before you all at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
I will take a look up on the signage for president.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close public portion, motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. I'm standing. Anyone have a further discussion for me? Mayor Ward.
Everyone have a good evening, thank you for coming out.
Counselor Thomas.
Um, I just want to add, on October twenty-first, on sixth day eighty, ages one year to twelve years old, we will have a Halloween event, um, here, um, in City Hall parking lot. You must be a city resident, and you must, um, pre-register, um, with the rap. The phone number is six oh nine, four eight four, thirty six oh eight, or you can use this number here, six oh nine, four eight four, thirty six, twenty seven. I wanna say congratulations to you, Dr. Chapman, and the great house on that win on Friday night. Um, they're looking good out there, and thanks everyone for coming out.
You're correct with the bike path, it does need to be, but it's one of those things that it takes a village, everybody needs to be involved in, especially people who live on that bike path need to, you know, kinda go out and keep an eye on.
Counselor.
Good evening, thank you for coming out, I was saying, Louie, great back there, how are you doing, great? Have a great night.
Counselor.
Well, good evening, everybody, thank you for coming up, have a blessed night.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out on this rainy day, appreciate that, thank you very much.
Counselor David.
Yes, I wanted to go back into the bike path, you know, gradually and set some. But Chief, I had, um, also gotten a complaint from a couple residents, one of them that walks that bike path quite often. And they said there's a lot of people out there doing whatever they're doing, and, you know, this lady's a middle aged lady and it's kinds of scares her sometimes when she comes through there. So I was hoping, I was gonna give you a call, but, you know, I think we need to get someone up there to walk through there sometime or ride the bikes through there, just to make sure that, you know, we can start determining them from leaving man chute and going down to the bike path.
Cool, can we call anytime, give me the particulars, a little address?
All right, thank you.
Just like the point, point of Florida, can we get a moment, I want a moment of silence, give us a moment of silence for Puerto Rico, the Native Republic, Florida, South Carolina, Fort Myers, and, um, the Hurdle Beach. This storm is terrible, there's some terrible things.
Okay, I wanted to announce that, um, on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, of course, City of Pleasantville is sponsoring community resources and motor vehicle collaboration in Pleasantville City Hall from ten to two P M. Representatives from the local social services, public agencies, and New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission will be on site to provide resources and discuss their services to individuals and families in the community with their needs. So that's October seventeenth from ten to two A M, uh, excuse me, ten A M to two P M, representatives will be here in City Hall, so, um, just come out and anyone you know that may be needing the services, encourage them to come out.
Mayor, you said, um, motor vehicle?
Yes, it's, that's, um, community resources and motor vehicle collaboration.
Now, would the residents need to pre-register for that?
It doesn't say anything about pre-registering, it doesn't say anything about that at all. So how would you just walk out? Okay.
Yeah, I'll let you know, I'll get one.
Asia, I know they asked, they have to pre-register, but, um, she had provided that this time, but we'll certainly check later and make sure you guys get the flyers, um, because I think there also will be, um, warrant recalls in the library on the same day at the same time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there flyers? What, flyers? Another, we'll be in next question.
Good evening again, uh, thank you for coming out, um, your concerns are my concern and hopefully everyone else's concern, I think, um, we have to think about what's best for City of Pleasantville and do what's best for City of Pleasantville. Thanks again, God bless City of Pleasantville, I intend motion to adjourn. I know, I'm, uh, motion to go into, uh, executive session, motion?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now we're going into the second session. It'll take, it'll take five minutes.
Okay, good evening, everyone, the time is eight A T P M, we were in executive session for approximately one hour, eight minutes. Uh, the purpose was attorney client privilege and potential litigation pending contractual negotiations, and, uh, nothing to report at this time because no action was taken.
Okay, this time I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. You wish I could? All in favor?
Aye.